Was it? She's asking me. Anyway, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM. Let me call to order the meeting, Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, May 1st, 2018. Let me remind everyone that may address the board to sign in on the clipboard and make sure the microphone is turned on. Our next planning board meeting after tonight will be Tuesday, May 15th, 2018. It's 7:00 PM in this room. We have no alternates to appoint to positions. We have none of that to address, so that brings us to... Oh, thank you. It's fixing me up there.
Do we want to just tell everybody?
Planning and zoning administrative report. We're going to be done with it in 30 seconds.
All right, okay.
Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple items for the planning and zoning administrative report. First is letting the board know that the National Regional Planning Commission is holding a roundtable, a regional roundtable for planning board members, which will be on June 11th. I know Bob has indicated that he will be interested in attending. If anybody else on the board is interested in attending, let me know. I can get you the contact information for registration. It's an afternoon on June 11th where they're hoping to get a variety of planning board members from around the region together to talk about issues the communities are facing and other basic conversation.
I think it's actually evening, isn't it?
Is it evening?
Like 6:30 or something?
I wasn't sure if I didn't actually click on the link, so.
I put it on my schedule. So, one of the interesting things, this is really a chance to meet other planning board members from other towns. There isn't any business or any agenda or any of that going on. It's really just almost all social.
What is it? What time is it, Bob? Can you?
It is at 6:30 PM and it's at NRPC.
Well, I'll go then.
Yeah, I'll send you the information.
Which is different than the May 17th meeting.
Yes, that's the training session.
That's the training session for planning board.
Basics.
Yep.
Okay. Is there actually a registration for that roundtable?
There's a link for, so they can get a head count and plan on seating and whatnot, so.
Okay.
But I will get that out to people who, if you're interested, just let me know.
I got the email, so I-
Okay. So, I'll send it to Neil and I'll send it to Alastair.
So, a real good chance to make those connections for the boards. Tim?
The only other thing was just a reminder that the annual meeting with the planning board's leadership and the town council will be on May 10th.
So, that's day after tomorrow. I will be there?
When?
I mean, next week. Next week, I'm sorry. A week from-
You've got me worried.
You're rushing into May here awfully quick, sir.
June's better than May, anyway. We're trying to get the weather better. Thursday next week. And that is typically a brief meeting where we kind of recount some of the things that we've been up to. And probably the most interesting thing we've been up to, I think, is the sidewalk and pedestrian map that NRPC has developed for us and the surveys that we took at the polling places. I had noticed, and I think Tim had noticed before me, that NRPC has actually used that corridor study to present a poster demonstration at a conference, a planning conference in Connecticut. So, we're the star of the show for some of their research. Other than that, everybody's welcome, Alastair. I hope you'll be able to be there.
I will definitely be there.
Neil, I know you're going to be there for a different reason, because that's the Rotary Club's chance to see the town council, too. So, we'll all be there to say hello.
And you'll be there, Tom?
I will now, yes. I was going to miss it, but the meeting I thought I was going to got postponed a month.
Excellent. So, Neil, Tim, any few more on the planning and zoning administration?
Nothing else for P&amp;Z tonight, no. I have got a couple other things we'll do later on the agenda.
So, that May 17th training meeting, has it, who signed up for that? Do we know? Anybody from our board?
I don't know specifics because we've been, you've been registering directly with NRPC, so.
Hopefully, some folks go. I can't, but hopefully-
I certainly will not be going.
The workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah, I signed up.
Oh, good.
I know Sharon, my secretary from my office, is also attending as well, so.
And I believe Dan.
Dan?
And I think Nelson is also, I think Nelson said he was going to.
Okay. Are there any other items, Tim? Not, are there any questions from members of the board for Tim? Seeing none, that brings us to the annual meeting of the planning board and the election of officers and review of rules and procedures. Robert's prepared a memo for us dated April 23rd, but the staff proposes no changes to the rules of procedure for the board. Does anyone have any proposed changes to rules of procedure for the board? Questions about rules of procedure?
Just to remind the board, the changes we made last year, these used to be called the bylaws, but we made the change to rename them to rules procedure to make them consistent with state statutory language. We've made a variety of changes over the six years I've been here, but I think after last year's change to make it consistent with the statutory language, there was nothing that seemed pressing from the staff's standpoint this year.
Okay. Questions about that?
Red throat and it looked good the way it was. Thanks.
If there are no changes, then we'll put away that bit of the annual meeting and we're left with the election of officers. Hey, Mike, what's up? Not really public hearing part, but let's hear it. What you got?
Yeah, real quick, I actually had an agenda item with the town council maybe about five or six weeks ago, and it was actually about discussing changes of rules and procedures to the zoning and planning board. And one of the ideas that I had brought up, and I don't know if the town council had ever taken up the advice or the idea that I had thrown out, was it was about notifications on some of the planning and zoning boards. I understand that when it is a, say, you know, recreationally saying, just saying a homeowner wanted to put a deck on his house, that you're only notifying the four abutters. And I had asked if they would take up the thought of discussion or whatever it may be to possibly change it in the bylaws, that on commercial jobs or things that went before the planning board, if they could come up with a new formula for notifying abutters as opposed to just being the four abutters on a large project, if there was a way to actually discuss having a larger field of notifications go out. And at that time, somebody on the town council, you know, was questioning how that we could do that. And I just had recommended that possibly, if you're looking at a 2,000 square foot home and you're doing four people, if it was a 200,000 square foot project, you know, you could figure out some type of math. So, I was wondering if that was ever brought up or discussed and if that was something that might have been changed on.
Okay. Has it been passed along to me?
Thank you.
I know we haven't changed our notification. Tim, you kind of were looking to-
Just from my own perspective, and I had not discussed this with legal counsel, but my experience and knowing the way the statutes are written and the way that we are enabled by state statute to do things, I don't know that we would have the statutory authority to do anything beyond the statutory requirements for notification of abutters. That would be something I'd need to expand with legal counsel, but I don't believe in my 20-plus years of, in this profession, that we would have the right to go beyond that statutory language unless we were specifically enabled to do so by the state.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that either. I think it may run into some trouble, but maybe there's an opportunity. Either way, it certainly hasn't been passed along from the town council that there's some interest in doing that or having the board-
What I can say is what has resulted from Mr. Malzone's conversations with the council is that whenever the town is doing legal notices that require notification in newspapers, we are now also doing it in the Merrimack Journal. The Merrimack Journal, unfortunately being a weekly paper, cannot be used as the only method for doing that because we can't meet the statutory requirements for notice time periods using only the Merrimack Journal. So, we are having to do legal notices in both the union leader and the journal. Because the planning board doesn't do legal notices typically, it doesn't really impact this board unless we're doing changes to ordinances or regulations. Those would be the legal notices that the planning board typically would publish in the newspaper. But the zoning board is required to do legal notices and they've been, had to, I've had to double the zoning board notification fee for legal advertising to now post it in both of those newspapers.
So, the applicants don't pay for that?
The applicants had to, I had to bump up the application fee because of that, because the journal is significantly more expensive than the union leaders.
I think in the, in the overall picture, whatever there is for questions about notice and whether you provide it to more people or not, I don't believe that's a question for our rules of procedure. I think that's a site plan or subdivision regulation.
That would be a regulatory change, correct.
Okay. So, even if there was a will to do that, this isn't the time or place for that kind of thing. If no other members of the board have any issues with the rules of procedure, then we would move on to open the floor up for nominations for chair and vice chair. Are there any nominations? I think you're the only one here that's eligible for a nomination.
Really? Okay. Well, then I nominate you as chairman-
Thank you.
-of the board and for vice chair, Alastair.
Any other nominations?
Not that you need a second, but.
Do you second nominations?
We don't.
I don't think that you do either. I don't think there's a possibility of having another nomination. I would certainly say that it is a privilege to serve as chair, and I'm always thankful for the support of members of the board who are willing to see me do that. And-
Ditto.
Glad to do it again.
Mr. Chairman, ditto. I would say exactly the same thing. I'd be happy to continue to serve if it's the will of the board.
If there are no other nominations for the chair and vice chair, all in favor of the slate, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Two abstaining, two, zero, two for election to chair. With that-
Does that work?
As long as it's a majority of people voting.
As long as you have a majority of those voting, you have-
In the planning board?
In the planning board, yes.
Okay. Are any other items for the, for the annual meeting of the planning board?
That's it.
Then we'll move on to item four on the agenda, which is Strife LLC as the applicant and owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of a final approval for a site plan to construct 47 elderly housing units, the parcels located at 412 Daniel Webster Highway and the R4 Residential, C2 Commercial, Akfer Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts, Tax Map 5D4 Lot 1. The item was continued from our March 6th planning board meeting, and we have communication that the applicant is asking us to continue it again until May 15th.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, you'll find a letter from Patrick Coburn, the project manager from Keach-Nordstrom, as well as a memorandum for assistant planner Kelly Shamel. Essentially, the applicant has just submitted their revised plans today. They needed some additional time to address some of the emergency vehicle access comments and concerns that were raised by the board and by the fire and Eversource. So, they've now gone about and done that, needed the extra time, weren't able to get things in time for this meeting, so they are asking that the board consider continuing the application to May 15th. In addition, they have granted us a 30-day extension to the 65-day review period under RSA 676-4, which would have expired on May 10th. The extension now moves the deadline to June 9th.
Tim, does any of their submission require peer review?
At this stage, the initial peer review has been completed. We typically would not send back to peer review until we have a decision made by the board.
Okay. So, there's no real obstacles that are going to keep them from substantively putting material force next time?
Correct.
Okay. What's the rule of the board with respect to the applicant's request for continuance?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the applicant's request to continue this project to a meeting on May the 15th at 7:00 PM in this room with no further notice to abutters.
Is there a second for that?
No second there.
Second by Neil. I would offer a little bit of discussion, not so much about the continuance, but I know that in the earlier discussion, we were in wintertime with some recent snows on the ground, and there were some members of the public who asked whether the board would be willing to go take a ride up there and have a look around, and I can tell you that I did. I did ride up there on a couple of different occasions, both while that snow was on the ground and afterwards, to have a look around. And that's the only comment that I would offer up in terms of discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I also went up there, and I certainly understand where the abutters are coming from. That's going to be a very difficult situation, especially where they've laid it out. I was hoping that maybe they were laying it out differently, given that they seem to have called it something different. It's no longer on Chamberlain Drive. It's now on DW Highway. I don't know what their plans are or what they're doing.
If I can regarding the property address, the address of DW Highway has nothing to do with where the driveway was to ever be located. It's just the address of the property per our assessment.
They're not on DW Highway. It's very frustrating to-
I understand that, but that is the property address.
That's the property across the street from where they're working, or?
No, this property has frontage on both DW Highway and East Chamberlain.
How much frontage on DW Highway? About five feet?
No, much more than that.
I think that the utility easement is actually part of this property, so the entire width of that, which is-
Approximately 90 feet.
90 feet for how many condos?
Again, it's one of, one of the two areas of frontage for the property. But again, the property has been addressed by assessing as being on DW Highway. That's the address that's been assigned for the vacant property since it existed from PSN H's days.
Anyway, I just wanted to mention that I've been up there and I know that Tom's been up there. I think, Alastair, you said you've been up there before.
I have, yes.
This may be a project ultimately in its review where a site visit makes sense for the folks to go up and walk around, but we'll address that when we take them up on May 15th, assuming the vote of the board. All in favor of the motion to continue to May 15th, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed? Any abstaining? Three, one, zero. Tom, you're opposed.
Yes.
And that puts us on for May 15th. The next item on our-
Could we, Mr. Chairman, apologize to the citizens who are here that they've come for, you know, for nothing? I feel it's, it's very hard that you get, don't know what till the last minute that the applicant has changed his mind or wants delayed. And I feel sorry, and I can only, as a board, apologize that you've been put to that.
Do you need changes that you received? Absolutely. Plans are always available at the office for anybody to come take a look.
Yeah. Great, great idea. Okay. Discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anybody have any items of concern? Tim?
I have a couple of items. One, as you recall, the board granted approval for MyBox storage on Continental Boulevard. They're working out the final items to try to get their certificate of occupancy for the project. One of the things that has come up is that in reviewing the site plan, they neglected to identify areas for the dumpsters on the site. So, there is no location shown on the approved plan for dumpsters. Traditionally, there have been two dumpsters on the site that, well, the construction company that has one half of the building has used in the past. The question that we have as staff of the board is whether or not you think that's something it would require coming back to the board or if you'd be comfortable with the board handling it, or the staff handling it administratively. Three options that the applicant has presented is moving the three stump dumpsters to a central location at the back of the pavement behind the buildings that are not visible from the road. Secondly, placing the three dumpsters in one location and putting up a screened fence around them. Or three, their least preferred alternative would be placing the dumpsters inside the warehouse space of the buildings.
Personally, I think I'm fine with the administrative, the staff sorting that out. As long as we don't end up with such massive dumpsters that they're ugly or visible or something like that.
Standard size, yeah.
The one thing I would throw out there to consider while that's on the table is driving down there, there's an awful lot of MyBoxes outside the building.
That's one of the issues we met with them on yesterday.
And I remember specifically discussing that with them, that there weren't going to be My Boxes outside.
There was always going to be some, but not the, in the location where they currently are.
Okay. Does everybody concur that the stuff-
Preference, preference on moving them so that they're out of sight of the road versus leaving where they are and screening?
No, put them at the bar.
I think put them behind the building out of sight, but-
So, what would be the drawback to putting them behind the building? Is that?
There's no real drawback. It's just the concern that we wanted to make sure and we expected the board would have, is making sure that they're not visible from the traveling public on, along the roadway, which would either mean put them behind the building or leave them where they are in screening.
Yeah.
I think if either of those options is okay with the board, we'd be fine with either.
I'd prefer to see them behind the building, out of, completely out of sight, if possible. And you're not dealing with the truck or anything else.
That, I think, is their preferred alternative, so.
I don't know exactly the way the sightlines work in there, but if they're behind the building but still visible from the street, then screen them.
Yep.
I don't think if they're behind the building-
If they're far enough behind, you're not going to see it.
Unless they're going to bother neighbors across the way or something.
MVD owns the land in the back, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's item one. Item two, I know the chairman is going to sit out the discussion on. At the redevelopment of the Shaw's Plaza, as you know, Planet Fitness is one of the upcoming tenants of that building. They have asked us whether or not it would be okay for them to put out a temporary trailer on the site before the site is open to start processing people's registrations for fitness memberships. Again, the question being here is, A, administrative review, or would you like that to come back to the board? And B, where the heck would we do that? I honestly don't know where it would be a good spot to do that on an active construction site, and I would certainly probably not recommend it.
So, I'm recused on that because of a conflict of interest. I can certainly open up the floor for you guys to discuss or give Tim whatever guidance you want. The question is, I think first, whether the board would want to consider that request or allow it to be administratively approved. And if it is to be administratively approved, what suggestions you'd make for Tim as to location for a trailer on an active construction site?
Well, I don't think that a trailer to bring the public in to have them sign up for a property that isn't even established yet is, is not a good idea. It's a-
So, I understand where you're coming from, but I'm curious as to how much earlier they want to set it up and-
They would like to have, they were, asked us if they could put it up today and pending your decision. That's how soon they want to do it.
Well, they've already put the banner up.
The banner is up and they have a bunch of little temporary signs out there that-
Having an active construction site requires certain discretion with safety.
You're only supposed to be in that one fenced, fenced-in area that allows access to the light.
And you need to be part of the crew, not, not-
And you've got to wear crush helmets.
Exactly. There are certain requirements from OSHA that, you know, restrict just the public from going there and-
I appreciate the questions and suggestions, but it's not a public hearing on this particular question, so let the board kind of sort that out.
My opinion is, is that it's not a good idea. I don't-
I would agree. It's not a good idea. I would probably suggest that if it was for no more than about a month before the building opened, that that might be something we could think of as, in fact, temporary. I think today would probably be inappropriate, and it would be up to staff to find a safe location the public could get in and out of, assuming there is one. But I'd be willing to leave it to staff if you're willing to take that on.
I agree with Mr. Chairman. For start, you don't want the general public wandering around a construction site because you're bound to, there'll be an accident. And so, absolutely no, as far as I'm concerned, on the site until it's open. If you want to agree somewhere in the town where they could have it, and I can't think of anywhere right now, but I suppose if I thought long enough, I might. That would be my only comment.
I would say that doing it on a site where the actual business is not located would not be permitted use anywhere.
Well, in that case, you've got the answer, Mr. Chairman. I, then, I don't think it can be done on the site, and if they can't do it anywhere else for those reasons, they can't do it.
Okay. I will relay that to Robert to pass along.
Thank you.
Tell all the discussion needs, Tim?
That's all right.
Okay, good. Any other items of concern by anybody?
I was just going to share briefly, and I have, in fact, sent you and Tim the note. A few comments that I got from the OSI meeting that Tom was also there, but I think we didn't go to exactly the same sessions. I thought there were a few interesting things. I think it was a pity that the ZBA, no representative from the ZBA was there because they, both in the special meeting on the ZBA and on the legal meeting, they talked a lot about the ZBA and its voting, how it should be handled. They did even mention that we shouldn't group waivers together. We should vote a waiver one at a time. But for the, for the ZBA, there was a huge, you know, how it should be done properly. I think it was a great pity that somebody wasn't there. The other couple of things I picked up from interesting, apparently the town can refuse ADUs on manufactured housing and in condominium, you knew that, but I didn't, so it's useful. And the need for to encourage multifamily and single-family units in the same development, that was something that they did talk in part of trying to encourage. And I think the most interesting thing in a way was the fact that if this, the state as a whole has less than four months of unsold housing on stock. Now, that's for the state as a whole. Down here, we're talking about less than a month of unsold housing. And I can, all I can do is instance it. One of my colleagues at work just put his house in Hollis, and it's not, it's an old decrepit house. He's older and decrepit as well. The house, within four days, they had eight offers to buy at all prices higher than it was advertising. I just share that with us, which is why we have to encourage-
It is, it is a buyer, it's a seller's market.
Absolute seller's market.
Huge seller's market.
What bothers me in a way is we have approved a significant number of houses in, through this board in the last 12 months, none of which I really, actually do I see coming up. So, I don't know how we, how we can hasten, but anyway.
There's a similar discussion at the NRPC's annual meeting, and Ben Frost was there from the Housing Finance Authority and commenting on the same things. And some of the statistics that they're showing were statewide, the, the demand for housing as it exists today, we're 10,000 housing units short. And of course, my response to that was, well, we've got 1,000 of them we approved here in town. Go get them. But I don't know, when you add the 250 and the 2, the 75 and the-
In, in various stages of process, both multifamily and single-family, there's approximately 1,000, of which I'd say maybe 500 has actual final approval at this point.
Yep. It, it doesn't surprise me, but there are some, some other limitations other than board approval. And the message from the NRPC was to the other towns and boards saying, you know, some of the limitations you're putting on are really putting a crunch on the health of the community because you can't keep any young folks in town if you don't have any supply of housing. And my response was that there's some, there's a bottleneck somewhere else in the system because it's not, it's not at the board level. I think that some of the projects that people are proposing have enormous infrastructure costs before they can get anything built. And I just don't know that anybody thought that out.
I can say that is absolutely a factor in one of the major single-family developments that has been approved. There's significant infrastructure costs that the number of units approved would never cover.
Is that the one up at the back of the middle school? Yeah, I thought so.
So, anyway.
Sorry to hear that.
It, it's definitely a, a good and important discussion because it's not just a matter of housing and do we have more housing and do we allow apartments here and there and elsewhere. But if you want companies to come and bring jobs, they can't come if there aren't any employees, there aren't any employees for any houses. And this, all, all of these things are, are tied together and interrelated. So, they're worth considering, kind of, which is why they're in our master plan and all that other stuff. Other comments or questions?
No.
Definitely. I, I, I very much enjoyed the plenary session where they talked about housing and they talked about education and they talked about, what was the third topic?
What else? They talked about education. They talked about development.
Housing and development.
And they talked about-
Transportation.
Well, no, it was more-
Jobs, workforce.
Workforce. It was the workforce situation and, and no raw review of what the state needed.
The whole idea of being able to retain some of our young people are getting them to come back if they go out of town, out of state for school and, you know, come on back and, and work here.
Or even if they moved out for a couple of years to work, do the first job, to get them back, yes.
Yeah. It's a chicken and egg problem, obviously, with housing and, and jobs. You're not going to get employers to come in if there's nobody to work. Nobody's going to come work if they don't have somewhere to live that they can afford reasonably. One of the interesting facts from the Housing Finance Authority guy was that we're at about 2% vacancy rate on apartments in the state statewide.
Yeah.
And, and that coupled with a short housing stock number and just, just exacerbates that whole problem. And so, their, their plea was to planning and zoning boards to, to do what you can. And to that end, one of the things that, that, I, I went to the ADU presentation where they spent a lot of time talking about ADUs, what they are, how they exist, and, and things like that, and said that that's one way that you can expand your housing stock in a hurry.
And we are way ahead of the curve on the ADU situation.
Yeah, we were allowing those before the law changed.
We started, we started allowing them before the effective date of the law. And I've provided some numbers to Ben at NH, New Hampshire Housing, and I believe since we made the change of the ordinance, and this probably doesn't include the ones that have happened since I last talked to Ben, we'd approve somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 to 35 of them under the new process.
One of the interesting things when I heard Ben talking about ADUs, he says he visits a lot of towns and the people from the planning board or the zoning board will be all exacerbated at ADUs and say, well, we've tripled the number of ADUs. And I'll say, well, how many you got? Well, three. We had one, now we got three. Oh, boy. It's a little bit of funny there.
Well, it was interesting. Some people were complaining that they were worried that the ADUs are going to take away from the apartment complexes and stuff like that because now you've got people making cheaper housing and stuff like that, and the rents aren't going to hold up and all this.
I don't think constructing ADUs is going to put it on the market cheaper than, than apartment complex does, but at 2% vacancy, that's the vacancy rate it takes to clean the place up and get it ready for the next tenant.
And get it ready to turn it around again, yeah.
A, a really low vacancy rate would be 5%.
That's like when you get to employment, when you hear employment rates like New Hampshire has at 2% or 3% or 4% unemployment, those are, that's just the amount of unemployment that exists for people to shuffle.
It's ju, job shuffling, and it's cr, it's critical.
The other unit I went to was on solar, solar arrays mostly- The other unit I went to was on solar, solar arrays, mostly talking about large solar arrays, not house top solar situations. But two fellows, Greg and Mark or whatever, have been working on some funding to put together a model, a model, what do I, what do I want to call it? Procedure, not procedure, but...
Regulation or something?
Regulation or something that people can use to adopt for solar arrays and things like that. And they talked quite a bit about large solar arrays and, and they gave examples of the things we've seen in the, in the newspaper of the big monster solar array that somebody puts in their front yard that stands up 30 feet and rotates around and, and actually lifts on the, on the pole. So that's a problem because that one you can't hide. But solar arrays that are mounted on the ground, you can pretty much hide behind banks of trees and bushes or, or dips in the landscape or something like that. And a lot of the concern that people have about impervious surface and things like that, when you look at an array, it actually is spaced probably more distance between the panels than the panel itself, and there's a lot of drip lines and stuff around the panels and stuff so that it's not really impervious. There may be an impervious section where the concrete is set up to hold the posts that the framework is built on, but that's a very small piece when you consider the acres of land that they're covering. And so filling up, you know, a capped landfill or something like that with a solar array has a tremendous benefit in getting the solar energy without disturbing very much as far as the water infiltration and things of that nature are concerned. And if you plant the right kind of field grasses in between and whatnot, it's easier to maintain. Habitats exist underneath them and all kinds of things. So they have a, a model regulation that they're going to be putting out in the next week or two to offer to towns to use as a model only. This is not intended to be one that you would implement, you would go in and adjust it and fine tune it for your town and set it up to, to be able to use it, to, to work with an ever-expanding situation with respect to solar. They talked a lot about solar and wind and how much that's growing over the past. Showed some graphs that, you know, are hockey stick type graphs where the cost of solar has come down dramatically and the installation rate is going up dramatically over the past 10 years. Where solar went from $100 a kilowatt or something down to 20 cents a kilowatt or whatever, it's, it's gotten tremendously less expensive to install it and the materials and whatnot are better. And then he went on to say that solar panels, should they wear out, are recyclable. I mean, all the silicon in there is highly purified silicon and very, very definitely recyclable. And overseas, in China and whatnot, there are companies that are developing to do that, but it's too early on to develop that need here because there aren't any solar arrays that are going out of commission at this point to any large extent. But that recycling those materials should be an easy, good process to keep things green, if you will.
That's interesting. I think, I'm sure that when they have their model ordinance, they'll distribute it, Tim, if you get one. Let's have a look at it and see if it makes any sense.
It'll be up on the OSI site, it'll be in several different places, so we definitely have to look at it.
There's a model ordinance for the tiny homes, the 600 square foot things.
Yeah.
Like a year or so ago, but whoever put it together was clearly an advocate for tiny homes and didn't really think much through the way that ordinances were, so it wasn't really all that effective.
So I, I guess in a nutshell, I, I thought the conference, it's the first time I've made it to the conference and I thought it was extremely well put together, was heavily attended. I was impressed with the number of people that were there.
The ballroom was completely full of people.
Yeah, they had shut off the registration. They had to turn people away because they just didn't have enough room to take everybody. So it was, it was a very good conference, definitely worthwhile.
Although I made, I made a mistake going on the one of, on sort of rebuilding or preserving, you know, ancient buildings. That historic, it wasn't, but that bit wasn't very good. Unless you lived, unless you lived in, I think...
Was it Kingston?
There's two places where if you had to have lived, it might have been interesting, but the rest of it was very dull. Anyway, otherwise, I agree with Tom, it was a great conference.
Very good. Any other items of concern or discussion? All right, seeing none, that brings us to approval of the minutes of April 17th, 2018. What's the rule of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I think most of us may have had an email, well, certainly the chairman and I have, and I suspect Tim has had an email from our colleague Nelson Disco who